Twelve, very pretty surprise. President, given the flag of the United States of America, and the republic for which it stands, one nation, and under God, and it is well with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you for your questions. A gender review. It's gonna be a quick meeting, we're gonna set some records tonight.
Hands on a roll.
Approve the minutes of November twenty-third.
Don't move.
I'll second it.
Can I? I wasn't, you know, I can still.
You can still talk.
Yeah.
Any discussions? And all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi, all those abstaining?
I'm abstaining.
Yeah.
I'm abstaining.
Yes, we have three yeses, one abstention. Okay, for action items, we signed the payroll manifest, one abatement, one supplemental warrants, and an exit interview letter. I've been asked to read a formal notice of resignation, so I'm gonna read this aloud. Dear Chief Warrior, this letter serves as my formal notice of resignation as a patrolman with the Barnset Police Department on November twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-one. I am grateful for everything that I have learned and experienced in this department. The opportunities while working here hone my skills and abilities. Working here at Barnset PD has been a great pleasure alongside professional colleagues and superiors. Despite the positive experience, I have realized this career is not for me. I recognize my official training period is not complete. However, I do not believe it would be advantageous for myself or beneficial for the department to unnecessarily exert their resources on my behalf. Therefore, my end date will be eleven-twenty-four-twenty-one. Again, thank you for the experience, Adam McLeod. Do we, we don't need to do a motion to accept resignation, right? Okay. So we have the resignation, and then we also had a DES Shorland permit. Informational items. Okay, seeing none. We're gonna move to the five-fifteen appointment right on the dot, I might add, with our road agent for the two thousand twenty-two proposed budget. So just in keeping with how I've been doing the budget is I'll read the line item and then ask if there's any questions for you.
Okay.
That way, that kinda... And I know you had some supplemental here on the back, so I keep on track with that. Does anyone have any questions for George before we get started? Okay, seeing none.
I have one.
Okay.
George, what are your thoughts on the fact that we allowed you to spend overtime money this summer? Was it, did it work out? Was it worth it?
It did work, it did work out well, because we had a lot going on. And, you know, with the flooding we had also, you know, it made a big difference. You know, we wouldn't have been able to do the things we did and got done if we hadn't have had it. So, yes.
I have no intentions of amending the figures that you present, but I just want...
Yep. No, it all worked out well.
Okay.
Okay. So we're going to start with highway full-time. And that includes six full-time, including the road agent. Did anyone have any questions? Or do you want me to just move right over all the salary lines? Okay. All right, so we're gonna actually move down to one dash three oh nine, which is administrative training and conferences. We're gonna level fund that? Keep that the same?
Yeah, keep that the same.
Okay, so it's gonna be one thousand seven fifty.
So these numbers aren't in here?
Yeah. Now, obviously with the craziness going on, you didn't use really anything in that fund. Is there expectation to be sending people to offices or classes?
Yeah, they're starting back up again, so next year I'd like to send my guys to a couple of things as of right now.
All righty. Anyone have any questions regarding administrative training and conferences? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna move to administrative telephone. You gonna level fund that as well, two thousand dollars? Okay. I'm gonna go to three dash six nine oh, which is administrative other miscellaneous. That's the usual water cooler, cups. Do you wanna level fund that? I mean, it doesn't look like you really spent anything.
We really didn't spend much on it.
So is that an area that you're thinking reduce a little bit?
Yeah, we can get rid of a little bit on that, because most of the guys bring their own water in the summer and...
Okay. So...
I have a question back on four, four-ten. Electricity at the town shed?
We're not there yet.
But you went past it.
No.
No.
We're right at the line above it.
Oh, okay.
Now, the annual tank monitoring and testing, is that the thirty-nine dollars? You know, Karen?
I gave you a complete detail. Uh, let me see.
Yeah.
Where are we?
Oh, here it is. Sorry about that.
No, that was, nope, just supplies. It had, there wasn't anything for annual tank monitoring spent. Was she?
Probably because DES might have not done that, or...
I haven't seen anybody from there.
Okay. So we'll, we can revisit that. Nail it down a little, the number down. Make sure we get the testing and find out what it was the previous year. Okay. Okay, now electricity, town shed. Ed, you had a question?
Do you have any idea, George Wyatt? The figure is nine hundred dollars higher than what we budgeted?
I do not, other than the fact we had one of those Modine heaters that was acting up. And I think that took a lot of the electricity. So we ended up shutting it down until we can get it fixed. And now that we have a new heating guy, you know, he's gonna look into it.
Okay.
I'm just gonna see if I can find it in here. Electricity, just see if something stood out. Let's see. Other than...
Actually, there's one to the PD in April.
Yeah, that doesn't belong there, right?
Nope, that one will have to be moved, PD.
But that, yeah, that was only two hundred. It looks like the, it was the month of February, which may have been when the heater, because that was two hundred and fifty-six kilowatts when everything else was a lot lower. And the Constellation New Energy, what's that?
Just that's the energy supplier we switched for a lower rate.
Right now, we're actually at five thousand two hundred dollars and thirty cents, so we're over.
And we'll, we'll remove that PD
Yeah.
expenditure, but it's at five thousand.
About five thousand, right now that we're at. Okay. And we have about one more bill to come in, I think, or one of them?
No, that's it, if you count, there's twelve bills there, so there won't be any more posted to that line.
Eleven. We should have one that said that's dated around twelve-eight.
I've got, well, even after removing PD.
Yeah, remove PD and also the Constellation New Energy.
Um, no, I think that...
Top cycle.
It looked like a final one on January eleventh from EverSource that probably should have gone into last year's. That's what it looks like. I'll, I'll check
Double-check that one.
Lisa tomorrow and find out.
Ready? Any further questions for electricity? Okay, heating, town shed, that's our rates for the oil and the propane. Computer printer supplies. Getting... Now, were you talking about getting the new software? Is that in here, or is that part of the back?
Yes. So the software that we've been looking at, I think I mentioned that actually this is eligible for COVID money, COVID funds. So we can use, use COVID funds to do the whole installation, the one-time setup costs. And then after that, it would be six thousand five hundred dollars a year. And the company that has this program, there's about ten different towns in New Hampshire using this program. So everyone that uses it loves it, it's very easy. We did some demonstrations with the, the company, and certainly if the board wanted them to do a presentation, you could come in and do that. But it's exciting that it, it was eligible for COVID funds.
Yeah.
Okay, and then so sixty-five hundred will be starting next year?
Next year.
Okay.
After, twenty-twenty-three, not twenty-twenty-two.
Does anyone have any questions regarding the computer slash printer supplies and whatnot? Okay. Seeing none, move on to highway streets. Paving and tarring. Where is that on here?
So that line has been fully expended.
So what is it gonna be budgeted for next year?
He, George and I had actually talked about two hundred thousand.
So two hundred thousand, that number will be...
Karen?
Yes.
On paving and tarring, I'd like to see a list of, of projects, what roads they're on, and whether they are top coats or base coats or reclaimed, or what they are.
Yes, and George, we'll be getting proposals, just, you know, of course, it's rough estimates, but just so we can see where we're at and if there's money to even, you know, do new, new paving. We'll, we'll just see what the figures come in at.
George, I have a question. Um, what are your thoughts on not paving province road, returning it to dirt road status?
Well, I've had a lot of people say they like it dirt better than asphalt, and I've had some say, well, we'll be glad when it gets done.
I mean, I just think, um...
I mean, the good part about it right now is I can keep it smooth compared to what it was.
I know, and I'm thinking cost-wise, maintaining, I know, outside of the initial cost, you know, maintaining. I just think, I mean, I think it's something we should consider. I think it's...
I graded that once we reclaimed it.
Yeah.
I graded it, rolled it, put the calcium to it, and I have not touched it since, and that was August, last of August.
I, I think it's something we should consider, I mean...
I've heard a lot of people say both ways, too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I think it's, it's something to consider.
I'd have to add some gravel here and there to
Yeah.
firm it up, but it's a really good road right now.
I think it's something we should think about, consider, when we're doing this budget.
There might be roads that are more crucial than province, or...
Well, not only that, it might be as we go forward down the road. I mean, if a road is maintainable and, like you say, depending on its usage and whatever, to maintain it as a dirt road as appears to a paved road, then I think we should consider that.
Yeah.
And that can be part of the list that you want coming forward?
Well, I, I agree with Paula, but for a lot of different reasons. I'd be very happy if it stayed dirt. Yeah, so that's, that's one thing. The other thing is that we spent an awful lot of time this past summer on paving. You, your crews were here, there, and everywhere. Now, the, the projects were all necessary, they were all done well, I believe. But that's all time that was not spent, for instance, on tree and brush removal, culverts.
Right.
So we have to free up some time as well as some money. I would be very happy to reduce that paving and tarring line. I don't know how much, that's why I wanna see a schedule of what you've got planned.
Yeah. That was on the plan to pave. I mean, if we don't do that, then obviously we can do a smaller road. You know, we got a couple in town that really should be done. We do have to do a top coat on Holmes Road because we based that this year. And then I'd like to see something done to Walker Road before we lose that completely. Right now, I think we could possibly save that if we get onto it next year. So...
Well, this is, this is, this is your call as to what
Right.
roads you wanna do and what you think needs to be done to them.
Well, for now, I would think maybe we can leave Province Road alone and get some of the worst ones, you know, not really what I call worse, but some that really should be taken care of to save them before they do go completely so we have to start over. And I believe Walker Road is one of those. I was looking at John Tasker Road. I honestly think when we do that, that's gonna have to be a reclaim job myself, because it's, it's gone to the point now where if you pave it, it's gonna be extra payment that's gonna be going to waste. It's not over, not really going to waste, but it's gonna take extra pavement.
Yeah.
Which means extra money.
There's some kind of a cycle, George, where all the roads have been paved in the last three, four, five years. You're kinda coming around where there's really not many left that, you know, that should be paved and then should be okay for a period of time.
Well, there's a few, I mean, you have Jack the Corner's been done, Pittman Road in the past.
Yeah, but that's what I mean, all the ones that have been done. Kinda like getting into a spot where what's left is dirt, maybe.
Well, I'd like to see like a ten-year cycle on the pavement. You know?
I mean, I think with everything that's been done in the last, whatever, five, six years.
Right.
You're getting to a point where you're pretty well caught up.
We're getting there.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're getting there. Um, the really, the worst one we got right now is John Tasker Road as far as getting bad enough that we're gonna have to probably reclaim that. So...
Reclaiming is...
George, you talking from one-twenty-six up to Goodriches?
From one-twenty-six right up to the very end of it. Yep.
Actually, I think you could spend some time and some money putting gravel on the rest of that road.
We have put quite a lot of gravel down through there, we need to put more.
Yeah.
Um, we did, from the top of the hill, we did Goodrich Road this year, rebuilt that, new drainage, new drainage on John Tasker, and new gravel. We went clear to the bottom, and then we shimmed in here and there out through the worst places this year with gravel. You know, trying to get the worst places with gravel that we can, and then keep going every year with more, you know, and the other places. Obviously, we can't do every road in town, but...
This is kind of the saving, like Ed said, a lot of things need to get taken care of or that kind of puts aside, I think, some of the weather that we've got to...
A lot of weather. Yeah.
And then a lot of the roads would obviously be great, probably not a lot of damage.
Well, we had a lot of rain this year. The rain beat them up.
Not a doubt.
Yeah, the rain beat our roads up hard this year.
So you'll put together a schedule?
Yep. I will.
Okay, great.
I'll work on that tomorrow and get it into Karen.
Any more questions in regards to paving and tarring? Crack sealing, you wanna keep the same?
Yeah, we'll keep that the same.
Eleven thousand four hundred, yeah. Okay, question bank gravel, to date, as of pretty much today, total spent is fifty-five thousand twenty-six dollars. You want to increase that by twenty-five thousand?
Yeah, and the reason I wanted to do that is because, you know, if we had to do John Tasker paving, we were gonna have to add a lot of gravel. Plus, I need to do a lot of other roads. We've gotta get caught up on this gravel on these roads to get them back to where they need to be.
So is it, I'm looking at the amount spent, was that due to the projects that you had done?
Yeah.
And as well as the rain that we didn't?
And we used extra gravel this year because of the washouts also.
Right, so you used extra gravel, but it's not reflected in what we spent? Because you were only, you've only spent half of what was budgeted for at the town meeting, which is a hundred thousand.
Plus the fact that prices of everything are going up, so I figured I better, you know, I don't know what the prices are gonna be next year, you know, fuel charges to haul the gravel and the price of the gravel coming out of the pit.
If a road, say like Province Road was to stay gravel, how much work is that gonna need to get it up to snuff where it can be left alone?
Not a whole lot. I'm gonna need gravel in probably six, seven spots that really need it, that were really shy for material.
We'll need a little bit of work to get it if we're gonna leave it.
Work into it.
Does anyone have any further questions regarding the question bank gravel? Okay, moving on to tree and brush removal.
I got another question back on the other one, if I can.
Gravel?
No, I'm going against you. Yeah, I, I know you had a lot of work to do over there if we were gonna pave that, Province. Culverts, I think, and probably all of that. How much of that would still have to be done if we weren't paving? Would you still be replacing the culverts?
We still need to put the culverts in. You gotta have drainage.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, they do.
Yeah. I didn't know if any of that was salvageable, or...
No, the culvert's a junk.
Okay.
It's...
So back to tree and brush removal. The number that is reflected expended year-to-date is accurate. And you wanna keep it at eleven thousand?
Yeah.
What are, what is planned for this year for tree removal, and why did we not?
We got a lot of, this year we didn't finish because I knew the budget was getting close, so I shut the tree removal down, which we were gonna do this month. But there's a lot of ash trees now that are dying, so we're gonna have to pay attention to those. And there's gonna be a lot of those this year coming down.
Okay, so I wanna keep that the same?
We'll keep that the same.
George, is there any chance you're gonna get somebody out on the tractor, the mower brush?
Yeah, actually, we were working on the tractor today, getting ready, it's going out tomorrow morning.
Because this, this was one of the arguments when we first started worrying about tractors and mowers, was being able to do it in an open winter where you didn't have a lot of snow.
Right.
There's no, there's no leaves left on the brush now, so you can see where the rocks are.
Exactly, and, you know, of course...
I noticed that you've got a lot of, lot of ash trees taped.
Those, no, I did not do those.
Huh?
Ash trees I didn't tape, blue and white tape on them. EverSource did those.
Okay. I just see a bunch in front of my house.
Yeah, EverSource did all of those.
Okay. Well, you still have lots of trees you can take down.
We still got plenty. Yeah.
That, that could keep you busy for months.
Yeah, amongst other things.
Why don't we just put some blue tape on the ones we want removed and let EverSource take care of those, too? Try and...
Well, it's a good idea.
All right. Any further questions for tree and brush removal? Invasive plant removal? We didn't expend any monies this year, do you plan on expending money?
Well, I was gonna have a guy do it, and he never called me back. I've called him four times, five times.
Okay, so you wanna keep that level funded?
Yeah, I would.
Okay. Anyone have any questions regarding invasive plant removal? Okay, erosion control. We have expended a hundred and fifty dollars.
You can keep that the same.
Okay, and why did we only expend a hundred and fifty?
We really didn't need to do a lot of erosion control this year. The only place we really needed any was when we were doing the washout. Now, we had to buy hay and silk sock and up on White Oak Silk Fence and stuff.
Perhaps.
Which we had some.
Okay, I'm not seeing hay in here. But the only thing was rock soil conservation mix and silk fence. That could be something to see if hay is anywhere. All right, so you wanna keep that the same? Is there any questions regarding the erosion control? Okay. Equipment truck purchase, you wanna keep that at the four thousand?
That one, yes.
We already got, so the notes that are in here are from last year, I think, correct?
Yes.
Didn't you say?
The notes that are in here are from last year's budget.
Like the storage container and all that?
This, this is a line that we deal with every year. A, a good deal comes along on a truck. We got four thousand dollars. Well, you sure as hell aren't gonna buy a truck, four thousand dollars. So if we're gonna, if we're gonna rob Peter to pay Paul, let's put enough money in this account so we can buy the truck if it comes along, or that other piece of equipment, whatever it might be. Now, I don't know what, what figure we should use, whether we should use thirty thousand, forty thousand, fifty thousand, but we use it every, every year. So let's put the money in there.
Okay, thoughts? Anyone have any comments?
Well, I mean, we can put it in if we don't find a good deal, or like Ed's saying, then we don't have to spend it. I mean...
Yeah, it goes back to the general fund.
That's because it's there, we don't need to use it if we can't find something.
Yes. For vehicles? Do you have that amount?
Yeah, so in the capital reserve, we have basically enough money for, we have a new diesel truck coming. So, and of course, you know, the state only pays, you know, like twenty-five up to twenty-five percent. So auto, the new truck is just over two hundred thousand. The state's only gonna give us forty-six, so that leaves a hundred and fifty-six thousand that we have to pay. We've got a hundred and eighty in our capital reserve, that's gonna leave us twenty-three thousand eight hundred. So we're looking at if we lease a roller. There's a possibility of purchasing a roller as opposed to, you know, renting it every year and putting twenty-five thousand dollars into renting. So we're looking at that. That's why my suggestion on the capital reserve is to increase that amount. I guess we, part of the reason some of these accounts haven't been spent is because we did go ahead and allow the purchase of the truck. And so... And so now with, you know, prices of gas and everything else going up, that's why we put a soft freeze and said, don't, you know, don't spend some of these funds.
Would it make sense then to put the, the funds instead of in the operating budget? Just put it, increase the amount, as you said, into the?
In the capital reserve. And it's, the highway department capital reserve, I believe, has been changed. So it's an expendable fund that the board can vote on during the year to use funds out of. The only reason we didn't when we purchased the truck was because we knew we had the diesel truck coming and we wanted to make sure there was enough money in that account. So.
So we can increase the amount going into the capital reserve by the amount Ed is comfortable with, which would be 30,000 or whatever?
Absolutely.
Is that okay with you, Ed? It's taking, instead of putting the, the money for the truck in the operating budget, we're going to increase that amount that goes into the capital reserve.
At least you'll have it available.
Right, right. So we'll do that and leave this then at the 4,000. Okay, so now, any further questions regarding the equipment truck purchase? Okay, uniform safety boots. You want to leave that at the six?
That we should be able to keep the same.
Okay. Right now, we have spent 5,677 for uniform safety boots, so that's going to roughly be that. Is there anything more that's going to be coming in the month of December?
No.
Okay. So we'll level fund that. Culverts, you requested to increase to 8,000?
Yeah.
Due to cost increase and replacements, correct?
Yeah.
Now, that might be an area where we could either level fund to go down because I'm told that we can COVID money, there's COVID money for culvert replacement. There's COVID money for bridge as well, so, but we just really need to look at all the money we have. There are certain purchases that Fire Rescue is asking for for COVID and certainly, you know, possibly the extension of Town Hall and then certainly culverts for highway.
So maybe Karen will put those all out, you know what I mean? Like what each department has possibilities for for COVID and compare it to what we actually have for COVID.
Yes, right.
And will that be on the 21st, you think?
Yes, I'll have that. I'll have a spreadsheet that shows you all the, all the possible purchases and funding.
Okay. Physicals, we're just a little over budget now. Are you comfortable leaving that at 500?
Yeah, I think we can. I mean.
That's because we have a couple employees coming down.
Yeah.
Does anyone have any questions regarding physicals?
Has the cost gone up on these or?
I don't think they've gone up, no. Hopefully, you know, we can keep the help we've got, so we don't have to keep doing physicals.
They run, they run about 42.50 per physical, I think.
Say it again?
$42.50 per physical.
Now, do they need a, a physical every year for their DOT card?
Do a DOT physical, yeah. Yeah.
The DOT medical card, $69 when that occurs. Okay, subcontractors, that's 11,000 and 9,885 has been spent.
George, are we going to try to get somebody else trained on using the grader?
I've already had a guy in it, Leon's banana.
Which would probably cut back a little bit having to hire someone from the outside to do it, right?
Well, no, it won't be hiring from the outside. I mean, I've been in it, but there's, you know, there's days where I can't be in. I have other things to do.
Right.
And.
But you're, someone else on our own crew is?
Our own crew will be running it, yeah.
As opposed to I meant hiring a subcontractor to come in?
We don't, I did hire Rocky's grader last year during mud season to give me a hand real quick to get out of a bind.
Yeah.
And that was it.
Is, also, does that include, I don't know, on this line, is it when they're hauling material into you? Like in the yard? Does this cover that too?
Yeah, they're doing a trucking charge when they.
Okay. The reason I ask that is because of those two 10-wheelers now.
Right, which we won't need to hire.
Right, you should be able to haul in with those a lot better.
Well, what I'm going to try to do this year is, you know, if we get days when it's raining or whatever, we can't do much of anything else, two 10-wheelers can start hauling sand in.
Okay, so that doesn't come in under that line?
Well, we can haul gravel ourselves.
You want to keep that? Okay, equipment services rental, this is where you wanted to talk about the roller rental, right? Potentially looking at purchasing a roller, Karen?
Yes, so I think I included.
Oh, yeah.
Pages for each of the board. George had provided these to us. So there's, he, he has three proposals as required. Some, you know, it shows the different pricing. You certainly don't have to, you know, have a major discussion on this tonight. You can review it. And then as you go over your budget, certainly you'll be meeting with your department heads again. Some of them are offering, one of them is offering some discounts. So.
So these range from outright purchase to leasing.
Right. Yep. Yeah, and depending on how far you want to go out with leasing, you know, it could be as little as, you know, 10,000 or 12,000 a year. You can see on one page it could be $25,000 a year.
So that's a lease to own? That's lease to own? Yep.
That's like as a rough idea on, yeah.
I was approached by one of my constituents who asked me why we continue to rent or lease a roller. We've done it enough years now, we probably could have paid for it. So because that's a concern of the public, so I'm going to promote and push to purchase a roller. Be done with it once and for all.
Okay. So that would be the equipment, right? Capital reserve, yes?
Yes.
If we have the monies in there and see what we can.
Well, I mean, that would still come under highway department heavy equipment.
Right.
And like I said, you're only going to have enough money after you buy your diesel. You're only going to have enough money to possibly pay for a seven-year lease out of this. Now, if you're asking to put 125,000 in there, you know, you could just purchase the roller, have the warrant article to just purchase it rather than put 125, but you want to, you, you need to keep building your capital reserve. So the other thing that George and I are working on is a spreadsheet that shows every vehicle, the age, how long we expect it to last, when it would have to be replaced, so that you can see how much you need to be saving each year in your capital reserve when.
Replacement cycle.
Yeah, and this, the software that I'm talking about will do all that. It will, it will give you all these figures on all your maintenance, your repairs, when anything is due. It will give you a whole project cost on roads. Has, you know, an entire inventory. I think it's a pretty exciting project that I know Budget Committee has been asking for for years. You know, they just want to know the costs of things, the expense, and this will, this will be able to do all that.
I talked to this road agent while Public Works Director now, Scott.
They use this.
They love it.
Okay.
The roller?
No, the new software.
What, what are we paying now?
I'm still on the roll, so I was looking at the roller.
Is that like 20,000 we just spent on renting the roller?
I mean, it makes much sense to increase its line by four and lease.
For this particular company we've rented from, it's two years worth.
Rather than just lease some.
How much?
23,000 a year.
23,000 a year?
Yeah, that's why I asked that question.
And so the lease, is that what's in there?
46,000 in two years we've spent renting a roller?
Right, so you, and it's in the budget anyway, so you could just leave that expense in the budget. You're not adding to the budget rather than doing it on the other end in the capital reserve.
Yeah, rather than renting it. Then you own it.
Yep.
Exactly.
So that's, so this is the number we're going to obviously revisit.
Yeah.
All right, winter sand, you want to increase to 48,000 due to the price of sand is expected to go up?
Yeah. And hopefully it doesn't, but everything else is.
Okay, winter salt, you want to increase that by 20,000 up to 50,000?
Yes, and that's due.
Do we have a rate yet or no?
Yes, that's due strictly to the, the price. And I called Morton Salt, excuse me, and, you know, I asked why the price went up so much. I, we thought perhaps, you know, because you sign a contract that you'll purchase X amount. He said it had absolutely nothing to do with contract prices. It's just the cost of the company. So it's gone up. It's 56, last year was 56.50?
This year, 71.03.
Yeah.
How much?
71.03 a ton.
Yeah, so, and that's just to meet the contract and, and what our usage is throughout the year. So that's a pretty solid figure for him.
Now, we'll be probably picking up the salt instead of having it trucked in or no?
No, they'll truck it in.
Anyone have any questions regarding winter sand? Okay, I mean, winter salt, calcium.
Wait a minute, let's talk about winter sand.
We already did talk about winter sand.
Excuse me, winter salt.
Yeah.
I don't want anybody to think I've changed my mind, so I move that we do not fund the line on winter salt.
Can we have a second? I'll ask you if we have a second.
It's not a motion, I'm just.
Well, why?
It's a suggestion. This isn't the final time we're going to discuss this. So I'm, I'm planting the seed for you to think about.
Okay, remind me why you don't want the salt?
Excuse me?
Remind me why?
I think sooner or later, every town in the state, maybe even in New England, that uses the amount of salt that's used is going to start facing lawsuits for damaged wells. That's the first thing. The second thing is that the salt is probably the biggest criminal in killing our maple trees that there is out there. And I think the other thing is that it's, winter salt is looked at as the end-all, the be-all. You put the salt down and the ice all melts away and the roads are bare and everybody breathes a sigh of relief. I think we use too much of it, frankly.
Can I talk to you a minute, Ed, about that with these new trucks that we just bought? These 10-wheelers? It's a computerized system. We went out Friday night and salted because, you know, temperature was dropping, better put some salt down. So we did. Two 10-wheelers, we did the whole town, less than two loads, and come back and dumped about eight to 12 yards off each truck. So we're not putting out as much salt because it's computerized. You're putting it down, you know, pounds to the lane mile. So, I mean, you can drop that down a very little or you can just whale the hell out of the road with salt, which we're not going to do. But, you know, I put it down at a very minimum the other night and it just kept the ice right down, no ice.
Are you using the salt brine?
We're going to be. We've got everything hooked up on the trucks. We've just got to run a test on it to make sure everything runs through them right and get that calibrated. And yes, we will be using a brine with that. So you'll be using way less salt than you already are.
Well, if we're using less, then it shouldn't cost as much.
Right, but right now, I mean, we're going through a trial period of learning. You know what I'm saying? I want to.
Ice storm the other night.
Right, we get an ice storm and then that's when you're really going to know how much you need to put out.
Well, the increases could be the same amount of salt, but it's $2 more per pound or whatever.
Hound.
Yes, it's, it went from 56 and changed to 71.03, so there's like a $20 increase right off the top, so. So we can revisit and talk about that. I know people have been playing a lot with the sand salt mixture as well.
Right, now it's coming down to that. DES is going to be cracking down on more sand on the roads because it's getting now into your streams. They don't want to see sand on the roads, not on the tire roads at least. You're still going to have to use it on dirt roads, but.
More reason to keep the roads dirt.
Took her a while, but she's back.
So is there any further questions on winter sand and winter salt?
Still getting sand gravel from earth?
By inch and a half gravel, yes. And the winter sand, yes.
Is it still, is it still decent quality?
It's good, yeah, it's good sand. Yeah, they found a new vein down there, I think, and it's really, really nice sand.
All right, now we're back to calcium. Wanted to increase to 30,000, that's the brine thing?
Yes. And we'll be using that also in these tanks.
Those two 10-wheelers are both going to carry calcium, right?
250 gallons on each side.
So 500 per truck.
And has the cost gone up on calcium? Does anyone have any questions regarding calcium?
Wait a minute, just one. Say, Province Road.
Yeah.
If that stays gravel, you're going to need the calcium there somewhat frequently.
At least once, maybe twice, depending on, you know, how the summer is.
Okay.
And the amount you have here?
That would take care of everything if we, even if we had to do that one twice.
Okay, bridges, bridge maintenance.
It's really only 14,000.
And then DES consultants, what money do we have budgeted that I was going to say the same?
It will stay the same, and that's for Erin Darrell, our engineer, the projects she's working on.
Karen, what do we have for red-listed bridges?
The only red-listed bridge is. The only red-listed bridge is off Gray Road. Hot Sean, it's the Hot Sean Bridge, which it's really at the Class Six Road, so we can't spend money on it because it's Class Six, and there's only one house beyond the bridge. So other than that, we're, after the Han and Outa Bridge project, we're, we're looking pretty good, so.
So we won't be eligible to get any of the funds from the state or the infrastructure.
They don't have to be red-listed to use COVID money. And there's certainly some bridges that have some issues that we should look at, one being Depot Street, Narrows Road.
Yeah, Cole's Ledge.
Cole's Ledge, and of course, the North Bynstead Road. At the bottom of the hill.
Now, is that considered the COVID money or the infrastructure that got passed?
I'm not sure that I would be able to cite the acronym because there are so many different programs out there. But certainly, it could be infrastructure. There's Stormwater, NCRS. Yeah, there's about three or four.
Get about a billion dollars, right, for the infrastructure?
So.
If we have anything, I mean, I think you probably have to apply for it, I think, so maybe find something and see if we can qualify for it.
And I've already reached out to Erin Darrow, so that's, she's looking at that to see which projects we have going and which ones we could probably, that would be the most advantageous to us with grant money.
All right, we now run other highway streets and bridges. Okay, oil and lubricants, is there a level fund that to three thousand? If there's no amount there, it's level funded?
Yes.
All right, gasoline increasing by five hundred due to the increase in fuel cost. Diesel, increasing five thousand again due to fuel cost. And increased operations, right? Any questions regarding gasoline, oil, or diesel? Loader maintenance. Level fund that? Any questions regarding loader maintenance? Greater maintenance, you want to increase to fifty-one hundred? Is there notes in here about that?
Yes. I think it's all the way at the bottom of the.
Oh, okay, needs cutting edges, shim kit, and moldboard, and the last two weathered tires.
Yeah.
So you want to do fifty-one hundred to get it up to snuff, I guess, and then decrease the following year?
Five, six, seven years.
Now, we put a lot of money into the greater this past year.
Yeah, we put new tires on the rear because those were, yeah, they were weather-correct and smooth.
Okay, and then there's the battery and, okay.
Yeah, we had to replace batteries.
All right, any questions regarding greater maintenance? Backhoe maintenance, you want to keep that at? Oh, so you want to increase that line to twenty-five hundred?
Yeah.
Up from fifteen hundred, and that is due to need new bushings and bucket.
Yeah, and we gotta rebuild the backhoe bucket itself, because it's just blown out.
Okay, any questions regarding backhoe maintenance? All right, tools, you want to increase by two thousand, you want to purchase new tools for the missing kits? And a lot of mismatched tools.
One-out tools.
Any questions regarding tool maintenance supplies? Pactor maintenance, full service is due, or is that last year's note? Keep it fifteen hundred? Level fund that? Excavator maintenance? Level fund that? We just didn't get around to doing the maintenance this year, or?
We did just the general maintenance, oil changes, grease. They didn't really need a lot. Just maintenance.
Any questions regarding excavator maintenance? Looks like we probably must have put the oil changes and stuff under another account, Karen. I'm only seeing the handle for the excavator.
Yeah.
So we'll look into that, so we can get an accurate number. Highway equipment maintenance.
George, do we have any sanders that need to be replaced?
Nope. I actually, right now, have some spare sanders sitting there hanging because we bought these trucks with the all-season bodies that have the spreader built in.
Okay.
So I have spares.
Okay, so you want to keep highway equipment maintenance at twelve thousand? We've spent eighty-one hundred to date.
That can stay the same.
Any questions regarding highway equipment maintenance? Street signs? Keep the same?
Yeah.
Any questions regarding street signs? A town truck maintenance? Want to increase to thirty-five thousand?
Yes.
Now, with the new vehicles, newer vehicles, wouldn't there potentially be a reduction in that amount or a level fund?
In the new.
Newer vehicles that we have, because I know.
You're talking about the newer dump trucks we bought, or?
Yeah, because a lot of the the stuff that we have, we traded those and got rid of those, so.
Yeah, I think.
These are still older vehicles, right?
Still older vehicles. I mean, you don't want to not have something in there, something happened. I'm not looking for anything to happen. They're in really good condition. You know, it might come a point in time we have to buy tires, but other than that, those trucks are pretty sound.
Let's hope so.
Right now, the tires are good.
Yeah.
They'll make it, should go up. Well, I know they go all winter. They should go most of next year. We should get through the year with them, actually. Unless one blows up or something, you know.
Okay, how many vehicles did we put tires on this? I see one, two. And we just did one in November. Brakes and whatnot. Okay, so the Ford got the tires, so one of the vehicles is all set. So you have the Ford?
No.
Is that the one ton?
The one ton is a Dodge Ram.
Which one's the Ford pickup?
That's gone.
When did that go?
Oh, I got new tires on the Chevy pickup.
Oh, I think it's listed here as a Ford pickup, that's fine. All right, we need. Is there any questions regarding contract maintenance? Seeing none. We're gonna talk about the transfers, whatever the capital reserves, it will be that in December.
Yeah, I think George and I had talked about it. I think he was originally looking for three hundred thousand to go into the paving and maintenance trust. But I think after this, we may stick with the two hundred thousand.
Two hundred.
Yes. So that would be level funded from last year. Of course, the highway department, heavy equipment capital reserve, asking for a hundred and twenty-five thousand instead of the seventy-five.
Where is the ones with the increasing the thirty thousand? Replacement truck or something like that that Ed wanted to put in the budget?
Yes, it can be part of this one twenty-five.
Yeah.
Okay, so you're comfortable with that amount of one twenty-five?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, does anyone have any further questions for George?
Thank you.
Thanks, George.
Do we have any public announcements?
I'm moving now.
I am moving now. I guess we're gonna move right on to public input. I don't have any public input. Anyone online have any public input? Is anyone watching online? Oh, yay! Do they have any questions they'd like to ask? Okay, we will close public input. Do we have a non-public, Karen?
Yes, we, actually, yes, we should. Sorry, a real quick one.
I was like, yes, and then.
Well, I mean, and actually, we probably don't have to go into non-public only because I don't know if I mentioned, I know last week you, we received a copy of the articles of incorporation for they've, it's called the Friends of the Parks and Recreation. And it's a wonderful program. It's, it's a wonderful thing to do. They're gonna help support Parks and Rec. However, we did receive some legal advice on it, and that's, some of the things were pointed out that they would just have to change. They can't use a town, because it's a separate private entity. So they can't use the town building. They can't use our mailing address. They have to be separate from the town. And we, so the league, there was some legal advice that was passed on. I think you read it. So if you would like, rather than getting the whole Parks and Rec group in to meet with you, I don't have a problem bringing in the commission members or sitting down with them and talking with them just to go over. They'll have to go back to the state and just change some of their articles.
Right, I mean, basically, if they wanted to use the town buildings, it would be just as if it was any other outside group.
They'll have to use for a place of business, it had, it could be someone's house.
Right.
Yeah, it just can't be, you know, a town building. They, they just have to remain two separate entities. The commission and then friends of, so.
Because it's not affiliated.
Exactly, and you want to be totally open. You want, you know, all monies have to be kept separately. The purpose of of this is, you know, to assist and help Parks and Rec. So, you know, it's a wonderful, wonderful program.
Okay, great. Does anyone have any questions regarding that?
No, we'll get together with them. That's what we'll do.
If you want, absolutely, if you want them to come before the board, I can ask them to do that, or I can reach out to them separately and speak with them.
That would be fine. If you explain things to whoever you need, Gail or Dave.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so, and there's no other?
No, I think that's it.
Didn't break any records.
Job out of you, Karen.
So I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you, everyone.